Thank you for joining us tonight. We have with us this evening, if we can just quieten. Oh, roll call.
Councilmember Parker, councilmember Stern, deputy mayor Gussin, councilmember Frueitt, councilmember Katz, councilmember Schwartz, mayor Hugueny. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by Resolution 269-2013, setting the 2014 meeting dates, sending a copy to the record in the Jewish Standard, filing a copy in the township clerk's office, and posting it on the municipal building bulletin board, and the mayor here writer asks that this statement be included in the mass.
Okay. We have with us tonight our township manager, William Broughton, township clerk, Jamie Avellina, executive assistant to the township manager, Issa Abasi, and senior clerk, Jennifer Jackson, as well as Stanley Turrets and William Rupp from the law firm of Wendy Banta. The next televised council meeting will take place Tuesday, June 24, with legal opening to begin at 7:00 and public input to begin at 8:00 p.m. Flag day ceremonies will be held at 6:45 p.m. on Saturday, June 14, at the American Legion Hall, located at 650 American Legion Drive. There will be an information session being held at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, June 30 regarding the township revaluation process. The meeting will be held in the multipurpose room number one at the Richard Rhoda Community Center, located at 250 Colonial Court, and is open to all residents. Prior to coming out tonight, council met in closed session to discuss matters of council procedure regarding supermajority for certain types of votes, as well as ongoing litigation and matters of, no, I think that was it. I think that was it. Okay. Beginning tonight, before we start, want to make one announcement. Due to the issue of supermajority requirements, requiring five affirmative votes for bonding issues, ordinances, ordinance numbers, 14-2014, 15-2014, 16-2014, and 17-2014 must be tabled. It cannot be voted on by less than five members. In addition to the ordinances, 17, and ordinance 18, in addition, we'll be pulling Resolution Number 18, again, because there's not a supermajority as required by law, to go ahead and do that. So ordinances to be introduced, ordinance number 14 through 18, and Resolution Number 18 are being tabled. Okay. Yes?
Since this graduation, will we have the meeting begin at 8:00 or 7:00?
Closed session begins at 7:00.
Okay, but will there be a closed session, because there are going to be people who are going to go to graduation?
So I know in the past, like, of kind of, sort of hustled out of there and made it to closed session as soon as possible. I think, do we have an idea of what's going to be on the agenda for the 24th? Yeah. Yeah. We do also have, or question, do we have the ability to, no, to continue, to adjourn the closed session and continue it after our closed session?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if people aren't able to get back timely enough to accommodate that agenda, we can continue it after the public meeting. Okay. So, our first order of business this evening is presentation, recognition for youth advisory board seniors who will be moving on to bigger and grander things. So we have those resolutions? I'm going to come on down. So, I think we'll bring everyone up, and then we'll have some comments from the group, and we'll go from there. So first up, oh, by the way, thank you, the youth advisory board doesn't happen by itself, and there's some wonderful, you, yeah, you, you pro freedom, you pro freedom, excellent. But the parents and adults that work with the youth advisory board, in addition to councilwoman Parker, have been just a tremendous asset to the town and to the youth they serve, so we want to recognize them as well, as we wish well to the seniors that are moving on. Okay, so first up, we have with us Daniel Rodriguez. In recognition of your membership on the youth advisory board, we wish you best of luck in college and in all your future endeavors. Congratulations. Stay up here, we'll get a group picture when we're done. To Jay Allen Bivins Jr., Victoria Wilkerson.
On behalf of the youth advisory board, I'm one of the adult advisors who work with Daniel and Victoria. Both of these, I don't want to call them children anymore, but young adults are very, very, very special. They hold the unique distinction of being five-year members on our board, so I think that deserves a lot.
Can you tell us what we're moving on to next?
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. My name's, my name's Daniel Rodriguez. I'm going to Lehigh University this fall. I'll be studying civil engineering.
I'm going to Long Island University post, and I'm studying, I'm majoring in political science with a track in pre-law and a minor in communications.
Again, just want to thank you both for all the time and energy you devoted to helping make Teaneck better in your five years on the board, and if that same energy and enthusiasm follows you in your future endeavors, we know you guys are going to be doing great things. Congratulations. Okay, next on our agenda, a couple of things have moved, but the next up will be a presentation
Good evening. My name is Wendy Berger. I'm from the law firm of Cole Schatz. I'm here representing the Glen Point Associate Property Owner. This is regarding block 4403, Lot 1. As you may recall, we were here before you a few years ago. We got approval from the planning board to build an office building on this property. It's opposite the Marriott Hotel for reference purposes, and my client had all intentions of building an office building on that property, but due to conditions in the marketplace today, and the need to have a tenant in order to go ahead with that project, it has not gone ahead at this point. However, my client still has all intention of developing that property, and they've changed their focus now, and would like to build on that property what's called a dual-brand limited-service hotel. And it's dual-brand because if you look at it, there are two different, what they call in the industry, flags, two different hotels on the property. One would be Homewood Suites, and the other would be Hampton Inn, and they're in one building. The property itself is zoned for the use, and you have a schematic in front of you in the packet of what's proposed on the site, how it would look in elevations, the main floor and site plan, the first floor, two levels of parking garage, and a typical hotel This building itself would have two floors of parking within the building, and all the amenities within the building would be inside the building, so the pool, the fitness area, it's all with inside the building. Why we are here before you this evening is to request to consider a change to allow an increase in height, due to the fact that we thought it best to include parking within the building, so that people using the hotel would have convenient parking within the facility, and this was recommended by the management company, who has expertise in this field. They felt in order to successfully operate the hotel, it was necessary to have parking within the building in close proximity, that that's why there's a height differential. The parking takes up two floors, it's about 30 feet. If that parking, those two parking levels were not there, the height of the hotel would be less than required under the ordinance, so we would more than conform. The height as proposed is 147 feet, that includes the two parking levels. The zone now allows 130 feet, so if we did not have the two-
So if it wasn't taller, then it would be shorter?
Right. If we didn't have the parking within the building, we would be less than the 130, we would be 117 feet. It's just because of the inclusion-
Because of the two extra floors you want to build, it makes the building taller?
Because of the parking within the building.
I got it.
It's not, it's not room floors, it's parking floors.
I got it.
And that is really why we're here this evening. I want, additionally, there are zoning requirements for bulk, setback, lot coverage, et cetera. We conform to all those requirements. In fact, the lot coverage, the setbacks, et cetera, are less than the office building that had been approved by the planning board. So there's, we're not asking for any relief for use, for bulk, for anything else. It's just so that we're able to put the parking within. Just as shown in the handout I gave you, the hotel would be, have 350 hotel rooms. They would be divided up between the Hampton Inn brand and the Homewood Suites brand. There's a list within your packet. The parking for the entire complex, we have more than enough parking within the complex to satisfy all the requirements for all uses within the complex, so there's no parking variance being requested as part of this application. One of the other things I wanted to talk about is what's the positives to Teaneck for this proposal? You know, why are we here? Well, one, we did have an office building proposed, but as you recall, with that office building, we had a series of other buildings and constructions that went with that. We had a hub property, we had these skysways that went across, so there was a lot of extra construction with regard to that. With this project, we don't need to do that at all. It's not necessary. In fact, if you look at the lot across the street, which is closer to the residential areas where that hub was going to be, you'll see it's all landscaping and benches, and we're going to, it's, you know, it's not developed with a building at all. Additionally, with regard to this site, an office building has a lot of traffic at the peak hours, where the residents and everyone else are going to work. We've done a parking study, and this will actually have much less traffic than that proposed by the office building. In fact, during peak times in the morning, I believe if I wrote it down correctly, it was over 40% less in the morning peak, and over 30% less in the evening peak, so it's a significant decrease in the traffic. It's a great spot for this dual-brand limited-service hotel. And someone would say, "Well, why you have a Marriott across the street?" Well, this is limited service, so there's no ballrooms, there's no big conference rooms, there's no specific restaurant. So all these, the users of this hotel will be able to use those facilities across the street and have those facilities. It also provides something else to the marketplace and for the residents that they don't have now. There's choices, choices when people come to visit. There's not just one hotel in the town to offer to the residents. A few other things I wanted to talk about. The master plan talks about stabilizing the, stabilizing the economy of Teaneck, and also providing industrial areas and commercial areas, increasing what's there and revitalizing them. Well, this is an empty lot right now. For those of you know, it's a parking lot. Right now, this parking lot pays approximately $18,000, or is assessed approximately $18,000 a year in real estate taxes. If this project goes through, as shown on the plans, we anticipate over $1 million per year in additional tax revenues to the township. And that tax revenue comes in two types. There's real estate taxes that the project would generate, and there's also hotel taxes. And I think the hotel tax is a little different, because it goes right to the town. You're not sharing that with the county and the school. It goes right into the town's budget. So this is ongoing, that starts right away for the town, and every time you rent a hotel room, that tax comes on. I know that that's a strong tax base for the town from the Marriott right now, and it would go right, right away once the hotel would be opened. And also, this type of project has virtually no impact on the services from the town. There's no children going to school, there's no requirement for, very little requirement for fire, police, ambulance. In fact, there's security that goes through the complex, and there'll be a fire suppression system, the parking will be enclosed, all the services are enclosed, so we feel that we'll have much of a lesser of an impact on the township. So that is why we're here this evening, to request the council to consider an amendment to the ordinance. We did have an opportunity, just so you know, in advance, to meet with the township planner and the township attorney, was John, to discuss what was proposed.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, I have one question. Looking at the site, it would be helpful if we had the other hotel on the picture somewhere?
I have a plan. It's on this-
Oh, okay, I see it, I see it inside, I didn't get that far. And how tall is that building?
The existing Marriott property?
160 feet.
So this would be lower than that?
Yes.
Okay.
Quick question, the dual-brand, is there any reason that we need to know about why this is dual-brand, or is it just for frequent mileage purposes and-
Well, you know what, it's funny you said that, because yesterday, USA Today just happened to have an article in the paper, and they said that dual-brand is the new way that hotels are going. It gives the opportunity to provide more services for one of the more limited brands in the hotel, and so if the Homewood Suite provides a little bit more services and the Hampton Inn doesn't, those amenities are there for both the Hampton Inn guests and the Homewood Suite guests. It all provides choices for the traveler, so economic choices and the type of choices you need, whether you need a Homewood Suites that has a suite available, so it has a little bit more room, or just Hampton Inn with a more limited room. So it's a new way that they're going, and having it in one building allows that, to provide that to the patrons.
Councilmember Stern? Just Homewood and Hampton, are they both Hilton, are you offhand, are they both owned to Hilton, right?
Yes. Getting a lot of nods in the back.
Right.
And it's not just we put them down, the client has gone through a process with Milton to secure, to secure these.
Okay. The one question that I have, because it seems as though the only reason you're here is for the height issue?
Yes.
And if you can walk me through, obviously, having enclosed parking is a great amenity, there's no question about it, but with this property having significant issues of bulk and density in proximity to residential properties, what was looked at as far as underground parking or other parking alternatives, as opposed to increasing that imposing facade on residents?
Right. Unfortunately, because of the shape of this lot, and the construction of what's there now, and there's no ability to put that underground-
Right now, it's just a empty lot, right?
Right, but you also have lines going to the town sewer, sewer system that's across the street.
And those can't be moved?
Well, they can be moved, but you can't fit everything in to, to get the parking lot as well, because as you know, in a parking lot, you need an up-and-down ramp besides the spots for the parking spaces.
Right, but you have that in the above ground as well?
Right, but you don't have the sewer and other lines, water lines and other things.
No, can it be, I'm saying, can it be moved around the footprint of this building? Can it be rerouted?
Not, not to, I'm sorry, I'm just getting some answers from people, so I want to-
If you could introduce yourself, I'm sorry?
David Senter.
Thank you.
Order tables much too high, those cars have to be lowered. In the garage.
Okay. If I recall back from 2008, when it was before the planning board, on the office tower, wasn't there underground reserved parking, there was a limited amount?
No, it was on the first, it was grade level.
It was grade level?
And then the building started above grade. This is, the building starts at grade.
Okay, there was nothing below grade that reserved, special spots by the elevator and the planes?
No, no. So the office, there was no offices on the first floor, the first floor was all parking.
I thought that-
All right. And I just, another thing is to make a comment, I mean, I haven't seen all the detail plans, but this property, I would have to say, is a little bit unique, because it's really, it's not that often we have the ability to have a project like this to be surrounded on three or four sides by, you know, a non-residential type area with a highway, another hotel, and so on. So I think that that's also an important consideration. I mean, I, you know, I don't know that we're ready to jump into this just yet. Obviously, we'll see where the discussion goes, but I think it's important to note that because the property is situated, the proposed building is situated, is surrounded on, I guess, one, two, three sides by highway, another hotel, and a road, is, you know, is also an important consideration.
And the end of the block, if, for those who aren't familiar, you have property owned by the township as well.
So your initial, I guess, estimate of potential tax revenue of $1 million a year?
Over $1 million.
Can you, can you break down that number as far as what you would expect assessed value of the hotel to be, and what contribution from hotel occupancy tax? You know, one of the, one of the things that we look at, as opposed to the office building use, is that this is two by two, at the taxation apple, with the occupancy tax on top, not just the commercial property valuation.
I had real estate taxes of over $500,000, and I had hotel occupancy taxes. Just so everyone knows, there's a, I believe it's an 8% occupancy tax, but 5% goes to the state of New Jersey, 3% goes directly to Teaneck, and that's 542,000 dollars a year.
That's the 3%.
Correct.
Plus the 5%.
Over 500,000.
So it's about, about half and half?
Yeah, I think, exactly.
That 500 figure on the real estate side is after the county and the schools are backed up?
No, that's, that's the grossed real estate taxes. Now, clearly, things change over time.
So the impact to the town is nowhere near a half million dollars on that side, it's closer to $150,000. But just so that we understand, because we only keep about 36, 37 cents of every tax dollar we collect, but the resident, the hotel occupancy tax does not get shared with the county and the school district?
And you factor the sewer tax into your budgets, right?
I didn't factor any sewer tax in, any separate sewer-
Can you touch on that? You're familiar with the wastewater sewage surcharge for large commercial properties?
No.
Marriott pays it as well, the current Marriott property pays it?
I did not figure that in, so I don't want to misrepresent.
Room rates just went up. We'd certainly expect the water usage to qualify this property for-
Yes.
-the wastewater sewage charge. That helps to fray our obligation to Burton County Utilities Authority for our effluent.
And just so you know, right now, the 2014 real estate taxes on the property are $18,196.
Obviously not, it's highest in best use.
Right. And clearly, you know, if there was an office building that was built there, there would be, there would be no hotel tax, it would all be real estate tax.
All right. No other questions, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing this project as it develops in our conversations and in your endeavors.
So what we would like is to have the board authorize their, Mr. Price, to work on an amendment to the ordinance, so then it could proceed in the course going before the council and the planning board.
We'll take that under advisement. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Hey, we'll pause for a moment while all the guys in ties leave. to begin with public hearing and adoption of ordinances. I'd like to declare the hearing open. This is for ordinance 11-2014, 12-2014, and 13-2014, as the remaining ordinances have been tabled. So at this point, we're open for public comment on the ordinances for adoption. Anyone from the public care to speak? Seeing no hands, I'll close the hearing on ordinances. I'm sorry?
Ordinance 11-2014, an ordinance establishing salaries and classification of positions for municipal employees in the township of Teaneck, included within the Professional Fire Officers Association of Teaneck, PFOA Local 242, for the years 2014 to 2017. Ordinance Number 12-2014, an ordinance establishing salaries and classification of positions for municipal employees in the township of Teaneck, included within the Fireman's Mutual Benevolent Association, MBI Local Number 42, for the years 2012 to 2016. Ordinance Number 13-2014, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of Block 212, Lot 1, as shown on the tax map of the township of Teaneck, located at 671 Pullman Road, in the township of Teaneck.
Okay. We do have somebody who'd like to speak. I will reopen the hearing. Mr. Rasheen, Dr. Rasheen, please join us.
I'm Dr. Alex Rasheen, Teaneck.
And again, this is for- And again, this is for comment just on the ordinances.
Yes, 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 absolutely, so, uh, the thing is that, uh, well, the whole thing doesn't look right in, because, uh, it, it establishes something on a known basis, we don't have budget, but we have to approve some ordinances which will be pending, okay? And I think it's, it's the wrong way to do things, because again, you see what's, where the money comes from, instead of planning for, for, uh, well, just, uh, two fourteen, two oh seventeen, no projections of how much money we'll have, do we have to live on our credit cards according to how, how the old council will just did it, or, or, or we cannot do that, because again, see, there is a new resolutions here, but I'm not going to discuss them, uh, to consolidate and to obligate the new council, okay, to, to, um, just get seven million dollars bonds, okay, so it's a kind of transferring the, the load of, of, take, take the credit card and still pay, 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 just buy, 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 and, and then somebody will pay off, so I think the whole thing should not be, well, voted on, or, or should be voted down at this point, uh, just until we know what is the financial situation, what we can afford to not to push people out of the town, because again, see, if we don't have budget, we cannot do, do anything, none, none of the, of the, I understand that some, some of the, um, uh, uh, ordinances cannot be voted because there is not five, five people here, but I'm talking about all of them, basically, it's too early, okay, because we don't have budget, just somehow to do this temporary budget, which is obligatory, but should be, should be funded, but it's not funded, tricks, and, and, and the same thing was, was, uh, uh, an ordinance about the consolidating the seven million plus dollars into, into, into bonds and obligate the new council just to, uh, to, uh, to get it and to use it, okay, so it's, 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 it's wrong again to just pass the old ways and, and the will of current council or the new council to just, to be, to be unnecessarily followed, okay, please, don't do that, leave it alone, leave all the big money decisions, what is necessary immediately to pay people and all stuff, I understand it's obvious, but big numbers, leave them alone, don't vote on them, okay, just table them for the new council, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, council members, anyone?
Sorry, I'm not sure he stepped out, this once again is fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen are off the table for tonight.
Correct.
Correct, so the way we're talking about the voting of the contracts that we've worked out with...
For both fire?
Fire.
Both fire units?
Fire units and the acquisition of the Premander Walk line. There's a seven million dollar number mentioned that's not, that's off the table, so it's, are agreed upon contracts that were formally agreed to in a Premander Walk. I'm ready to make my motion.
If we can, uh, if there's no other comments, we'll take a vote?
Okay, Councilmember Stern?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Gerson?
Uh, as to ordinance eleven two zero one four, I vote no, as to ordinance twelve dash two zero one four, I vote no, as to ordinance thirteen dash two zero one four, I vote yes. And this is the portion of the meeting where we open up for, uh, public comment, members of the public have five minutes to address council on any topic, whether it's on the agenda or not, um, just ask that everyone in the audience be respectful to the speakers that are, uh, coming up to the microphone, and I ask everyone to silence their cellphones and hold conversations to a minimum, uh, we're now open for public input. Would anyone care to speak? Generally, you'd raise your hand, people would raise their hand and I would recognize you, but since no one else is raising their, since no one else is raising their hands, by all my, by all means, come on up, if you could just, if you could just introduce yourself, uh, just, your name, name is all we need.
I'm Patricia O'Brien-Lebody, and I'm here to talk about gardens and fences. Can you hear me?
If, yeah, if you, feel free to lower the microphone and step a little closer so we can all hear you.
I never know how microphones work, frankly.
If you can actually step a little bit closer to it, we'd be able to hear.
Can you hear me yet? Okay.
A little bit more, a, a little bit closer.
On the spot, microphone introduction, okay, thanks folks, uh, I'm here to talk about fences, I'm a very happy community gardener, happy because I'm in a renovated area and we have a new aesthetic there, namely that there are perimeter fences and not specific fences, let me give you a bit of context, though, TNEC is one of eighteen thousand community gardens in the United States, and that factoid doesn't mean much unless you realize that we can select from many different ways of looking at administration, land use, and the way gardeners cope with things, and so I'm gonna start with, TNEC is one of the groups of people that uses fallow land or industrial land or land that was not originally part of prime property and develops gardens, that happens all over the world, particularly in Germany, where they use industrial land and railroad tracks, so we've used an area that at one time was something different, and one of our members will talk about it, however, we have to look at something else, we don't just have the land and people arrive there, we are one of those groups of people that go through a municipal arrangement where tax dollars, committees, administration, staff, all support the gardeners, there are other forms of governance that are used elsewhere, some of them involve fees, private management, people would come to an area and they're pretty much tenants that will, and they would charge a fee, public organizations will get land on, on properties in a municipality or a city, as you see in New York, fees would be charged, very often, public service is demanded, municipal arrangements across this country vary, some of them charge fees, some of them have community members who have gardens doing public service of some kind, all of them, though, all of those except private land, have people following rules, they make the rules, TNEC is no exception, uh, all groups have rules that determine how people will use the land, what they will grow there, what kind of service they will do, how long they can use it, and what are violations, in TNEC, the rules that operate at this point started around two thousand ten and were focused on making the land a lot better than what it was, if any of you want to see what the gardens looked like before and what they look like now, I have a blog called urbanurban.blogspot.com, and we'll have the pictures up for you to look at, for now, from two thousand ten on, progressively fences that were ramshackle fences were replaced by the kind of land you see there today, if any of you want to see it, please come down to Lindbergh Boulevard and look, for now, though, I think a few of you who have trouble with the idea of fences being removed, need to look at what it was we replaced this with, both with the community that, uh, garden itself and with the committee that was appointed to look at what various ways the fences could be changed and provided for, we have now a perimeter fencing, it has its issues, we at one time had individual fencing, we also have originally tried a module fencing, all with their pluses and minuses, I'll leave this now for someone else to address this, I get a chance just to say facts.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor, can I just make a remark, the, the, at our last meeting, there was a gentleman that came, uh, to the meeting and addressed the council, and he's, he had a concern about interior fences inside the garden, uh, we have a committee of, of dedicated gardeners, some master gardeners, and we've been working on the community gardens, uh, since two thousand ten, and we've been working as a committee, uh, the town has made a significant investment, uh, in, um, in renovating the gardens, uh, all the old telephone poles and everything is, is out of there now, place is totally renovated, it's level, uh, and it looks really, really good, and it's, it's thanks to, to this committee here that, that volunteered, uh, came to meetings, we meet at six o'clock in the evening, and, and they continue to work on this, and they wanted to, to, to be a, a community gardening place where you can, can be next to your neighbor and, and garden and not be separated by fences, uh, so I want to, I want to thank the committee, and I asked them to come tonight so that they could explain to the council and the public why we don't want interior fences and why we don't want the place to look like it used to look, so that, that's what you're hearing.
I, I also apologize, I was not at our last meeting due to, uh, due to illness, so this is the first time I'm hearing about the, the internal fencing issue, um, is there anyone else who would care to speak? Sir?
I'm Donald Watson, good evening, I have been guarding the TNEC community gardens for longer than anybody else, uh, the current community gardens site as of nineteen seventy-three was nothing but a big pile of wood chips, it's a stuff that, uh, frequently, uh, the police department had, I'm sorry, the fire department had to come out and put out fires and, and take care of community, uh, residents' problems because of the smells that that created, the, um, the green acres, in, in order for the town to qualify for green acres funding, I apologize for reading, um, the town had to remove the wood chips, which they did in the late nineteen seventies, afterward, the town created a few plots, basically for senior citizens, but the senior citizens did not have enough people to, to fill the plots, so they opened it up to all community residents, unfortunately, during this time, the gardeners did not take proper care of the gardens, fences were made out of types and, of different types of shapes, of wood, metal, cement, rocks and plastic, these ugly materials were left in the plots all year round, the neighbors complained, the weeds took over the paths and the gardeners, many plots were not worked or minimally worked, and in addition, they brought in smelly fish and meat and all kinds of other ugly stuff to put in the gardens, which again, the neighbors complained vehemently about, I received my plot in nineteen eighty-three and worked it for about a year, in nineteen eighty-four, I went over there to look at it, it had been wiped away, the entire gardens were gone, the town in their wisdom decided that they'd had enough of the ugly gardens, so they went out and removed them, um, Milton Robbins was the town engineer, I think, at the time, uh, some of you may know him, uh, he met with myself and two ladies from the garden club, and we created the rules, many of which we still have today, for several years, the plot holders had an excellent record of keeping these rules, uh, two of the plot holders reported rule violators to the town, the town immediately sent out corrective action letters to the plot holders, and the two people, um, interviewed the residents to make sure that they understood what they were getting involved in, and if they decided they wanted a plot, they got a plot, if they didn't, then we didn't, and then if they got the plot and it didn't work it well, then it was taken away from them right away, the town made sure of that at that time, until recently, the community gardens had again progressively gotten worse, it wasn't an eyesore, a shanty town, as large number of plot holders routinely violated the rules and a number of, for a number of reasons, the town was unable to enforce the rules in a timely manner, over these thirty-plus years, there have been other town managers who have heard and seen the garden problems, expressed a desire to clean it all up, but Mr. Browton was the only one is, in, in, in this town that has done something about solving the problems, he has established a twelve-member member committee as he spoke about, seven of us are the monitors for that, um, and we have an excellent set of rules that we have revised many, many times, mainly because some of the gardeners come, uh, want to do unwelcome creative gardening, or they want to break the rules, and that takes away from the beauty of the gardens that our committee has labored for many, many years to establish and maintain, Mr. Browton has put an enormous amount of time, his time, the town money, manpower, machinery to revamp the gardens in a way that is rather unique, beautiful, and although it is not yet perfect, hopefully, it'll be his own way of becoming a showplace, we're extremely happy to have Mr. Browton, uh, statue and willing to help us to achieve something that he, the town, the neighbors, the overwhelming number of current eighty-five plot holders, and hopefully, the town council wants, internal fences do not last long, they will have different looks, people will not maintain them properly as history has shown, the monitors will not be able to evaluate them whether they're a good plot or a bad plot, it, it will be very costly to the town, again, to replace the entire gardens that they have already done three times before, we want to talk about the internal fences that people have already have put up, or people who are complaining that they can't put one up, they're not good, and for that reason, fences should not be allowed, thank you.
Hi, I'm Al, I'm Alfredo, I'm also a member of the garden committee, um, I'd say, I had, I've had a garden since ninety-two, um, and as you've heard, it, it was, it was, it was, there were fences, uh, built in all kinds of different things, nobody cleaned up and everything, and in the last couple of years, the gardens look beautiful, and we, and, and an open book gardening is what we wanted, with no internal fences, and when we established the rules, you know, one of the rules is no internal fences, so that's the way it should be, and the garden, and Mr. Browton has done a very good job, as you've heard, and I want to thank him for that, and, uh, we just hope that, uh, we can keep it, uh, like that forever, that's it, thank you.
All the short people together, good evening, William.
I, I kind of try and pick people on subject topic, but height order may be another consideration.
Okay, my name is Robin Lowenthal, I've been, I have been gardening at the TNEC community garden for four years and was involved as part of the committee that, um, Pat and Don spoke about, working with Mr. Browton, Mr. Wilson, and other town folks to set up rules and enforce the rules, I feel as a resident of TNEC that me and all the other residents in TNEC are extremely lucky to have such a wonderful perk as the community garden, um, to my knowledge, there are only five community gardens in Bergen County, and TNEC is the only one that does not charge a fee, we're also extremely lucky to have a township manager who is supportive of the garden, um, as Pat said, the garden is a totally different place now than it was four years ago, uh, it's a wonderful thing to garden at a community garden, we get to grow healthy produce, we get to mingle with our fellow gardeners who would not necessarily be our neighbors on our streets, and also, we're able to give back to the community by donating to the Helping Hands Food Pantry, um, I need to be honest in saying that I'm no longer at the community garden, when my section of the garden became renovated and I was not able to have a fence, I was very uncomfortable with the idea of gardening without a fence, instead of coming here and saying, "I want a fence," I moved across the road to the TNEC Garden Club, I miss the community garden, I miss our meetings, um, the members of the TNEC Garden Club were outside working on the library garden until it got dark, just wanted to let you guys know, thank you very much.
Anyone else to talk about the gardens? Dr. Toffler?
Dr. Barbara Toffler, this is very, very heartening to hear this this evening, uh, four years ago, um, I had an opportunity when I was on council to go down to the gardens and saw what the disastrous state it was in, and, uh, I talked to Mr. Browton, and Mr. Browton and I certainly has, probably everybody knows have not had an easy time with each other, but I talked with him, there was not a lot of support from the council, but I am so incredibly delighted to hear what has happened, we talked about how devastating it was to look at those gardens, and because of one thing and another, I never followed up on what happened, I know Don and I know a lot of the people in the gardens, William, I thank you so much for following through on something that was terribly important, and it just is thrilling to hear what is happening, thank you, thank you.
If we can, if we can hold all of our applause to the end, and then we can clap for everybody all at once, um, at this moment, though, I want to just take a pause in Good and Welfare if my colleagues will, will humor me, um, Mr. Mr. Bivins was unable to be present during the Youth Advisory Board presentation, uh, he's just been able to, to make it over here from, from working on a, on a video project, but I'd like to publicly recognize him and ask you to come up to the desk and, and... and collect your certificate of recognition. This is in recognition of your membership on the youth advisory board. We wish you the best of luck in college and in all your future endeavors. And as I had the other members of the board who were here, the other seniors, earlier, if you can just quick introduce yourself and let us know what your next step is.
My name is Jay Allen Bivins, and in the fall, I'll be attending Kane University and hopefully, you know, studying international business, or film, or whatever they have to offer. I'll be dorming there. You know, I love Teaneck, but I'll be coming home as little as possible to get the full experience.
Best of luck and everything else. Yes, ma'am. Yes?
Good evening to everyone. My name is Delores Spray, and I'm standing before the council because I live over by Tuxedo Square and there's Bedford Avenue. I have placed a call to the health department and to the building department. We have issues with the noise. I know we have a noise ordinance, and after a certain time at night, you have to keep calling the police to come out to shut down the noise from parties. It's okay to have fun, but to respect your neighbors, at the time that the noise ordinance is put in place, it should be enforced. And by enforcing it, if people have to get fines, let them get fines, because it's a nuisance when you're trying to rest and you're hearing the noise from the music that's playing all through the neighborhood. Also, I called about the dumpsters. I was told that a dumpster could stay on the property as long as the homeowner wanted to. Well, this dumpster's been on the property for over a month. They're cleaning out a house. The dumpster's sitting on top of the front lawn. That brings down your property. It doesn't make the community look nice at all. And then we have behind us the wooded land, the park. Now the water's beginning to come upon our property. We have issues with the mosquitoes in the summertime. You cannot even sit in the backyard. We call the county, they'll come out, they're spraying. Back in the woods, there's standing water, the trees are all down, and it's a disaster. And, but this is what's happening. The water's coming up on our property. My neighbor is with me. She can attest to that. This is the thing that's happening. Then we have homes that's been foreclosed. These homes, the grass is growing up around the property. No one is made responsible to come and cut the grass down so that, this is still Teaneck. How Teaneck looks should be important to everybody. This is our biggest investment, is our property. And we should, as human beings, be respectful to our neighbors, be respectful to how our community looks, care about what's going on within our town. Revenue's on this side, that side, that side, or that side. It's still Teaneck. It incorporates all of us. So this is why I'm here today. We need to really get busy, need to enforce those laws that needs to be enforced with the ordinances, even I know it's not snowing now, even in the wintertime. People parking, repairing DPW to do a job. You can't do a job when you gotta go around a car. So if we start giving fines, giving tickets, this'll help offset maybe some of our property taxes. So these are things that really needs to be looked at. These are things that are important. We need to just get on top of what we need to do for our community, and I thank you all for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. And ma'am, before you go, if you could just stop by the manager and get one of his cards, because I think there's probably some more details on specific properties and specific complaints, so that we can make sure they're looked into and addressed appropriately. So if you can reach to the manager.
Well, I've already given the properties of the homes.
To the health department?
Yes.
So at this point, if you haven't, if we haven't responded the way you'd like, I'm requesting that
I understand.
We may get better or more thorough, you know, looking at this, if you can, if you can just have a conversation with the manager, and I think he'll be able to help you work through some of these.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Lilian Lewis, co-chair of the Teaneck Road Business Community Alliance. I'm speaking on behalf of the four merchants on Teaneck Road near Amsterdam Avenue concerning the availability of parking. I'll read out the four merchants. Chaudron's, His and Hers, fifteen eighteen. Hair Planet, fifteen twenty. Sneaker Boutique, fifteen twenty-two. And A to Z Fashions, fifteen twenty-four, all on Teaneck Road. Due to the bus stop in front of their businesses, their businesses are suffering economically. We, the Teaneck Road Business Community Alliance, would like the council to pass an ordinance to remove the bus stop in front of their businesses and relocate the bus stop a few yards away in front of the Overrise Building, fifteen hundred, Teaneck Road. There is also, there is a bus stop at Tryon Avenue and Teaneck Road, just a few yards away. Excuse me. We request that this area in front of the businesses, fifteen eighteen to fifteen twenty-two, be designated as two-hour limit parking from nine AM to seven PM. By doing this, the residents will still have their two bus stops, and the businesses would have parking for their customers. I await your response. Thank you. Since I have five minutes, I haven't used my five minutes, I want to also give a little announcement that on June twenty-first, we have our annual Juneteenth celebration at Overpack Park from ten AM to eight PM this year. For those in the audience or who do not know what Juneteenth is, Juneteenth is a celebration of liberation from the bondage that the Africans endured in this country. We're gonna have cultural history, we're gonna have a concert, famous violinists will be there. Also, we have amusement for the children, so come out. The new Overpack Park, Teaneck Road, go down to Teaneck Road, go off on Challenger Road to the left, and it's from ten AM to eight PM, Juneteenth celebration. Thank you. And I'll just hand this over to Ms. Jackson.
And as, just on the issue of, or on the opportunity to recognize the Juneteenth celebration, in the past, the town has prepared a proclamation commemorating Juneteenth, and we're gonna address, request the clerk prepare the same this year as well.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Acting Mayor Adam Gustin, Township Manager William Broughton, Town Council Administrators, Lawyers.
You don't have to include the lawyers at all.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna use five minutes. So anyway.
If we could just introduce yourselves.
Oh, that's right, me. I'm Joyce Giddens, and I'm Teaneck Road Co-Chair, Teaneck Road Business Community Alliance, along with Lilian Lewis. And I was gonna take a low blow about the garden club and us being related when I heard shanty town, but I won't do that, okay? Don't, don't put that in there, because there are some improvements that are being made. And this is the appreciation night for Township Manager William Broughton. We really appreciate how he's worked with us in terms of improving a facelift on Teaneck Road with bus stops and removal of some dumpster, receptacle bins that were a health hazard in front of restaurants. We have some more improvements to be done. We're also gonna be meeting with the preholder engineer and with the Lieutenant Flugello in terms of traffic patterns on Teaneck Road. But Teaneck Road, as you know, has many issues. Apart from improper sewage and inadequate lighting, there are problems with real estate or lack of. And I appreciate also the council members that have lent an ear to us and made some suggestions. And goodbye to some of you. The Overrise Building, which is at thirteen hundred Teaneck Road, I can say like that other lady did, block five zero zero two, lot eighteen oh one. About, I think it was in twenty-eleven, when Teaneck Road Business Community Alliance and some other people were looking at the building in terms of a proposal, and I know Larry Bauer at the time wanted to make it a performing arts building, which was a nice idea. I don't know what's going on with it now, but we want to see Teaneck Road looking viable and alive. It is the gateway to Teaneck because it's providing access from points north, northern Bergen County, to points south, Turnpike. And because of Route Four, we have access east to New York City and west to Paramus, et cetera. So we, the residents in that area and the merchants, would like to see an alive shopping area once again, that will attract businesses and buyers, and that will help all of Teaneck. All right? Hi, Isa. That's not five minutes. So God bless to all of you.
Anyone else care to speak? Kramer?
Naomi Kramer, Teaneck. Half question. I was listening to the proposal, the Glen Point proposal, and they talked about the amount of property taxes that this new building will generate. I, I don't know if it's true, but I had heard a rumor, so I'd like you to dispel it, if that's not true, that Glen Point is appealing their taxes for the Glen Point project, or for the Marriott, or whatever. They have been, for many years, been in litigation, or whatever, in appealing their taxes. So if that is true, then I'm not sure we can take seriously what they suggest will be the taxes that'll be generated, because if they don't fill up their hotel, they'll make less money, and then they'll say, "Oh, we don't have to pay all these taxes." So I need to, need some clarification on this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Doctor, please join us.
Chuck Powers, Teaneck. Well, let me just pick up on the question that was raised by Ms. Kramer. As I understand it, when you folks heard the proposal, and several of you actually boosted it as what you were doing with development, in January, you were gonna, that project was gonna generate one point seven million dollars annually, and now we're talking about five hundred thousand dollars. And I'm very confused about how a product, a property just went from one point seven billion dollars to five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in annual contributions. And certainly, Ms. Kramer is right, township has been being sued for a very long time by those same folks, about seven years worth. Most people think that that's gonna be, bring a judgment of somewhere between five and seven million dollars, which folks are gonna have to bond at one time. And you don't even have an attorney who's actually able to deal with that, because you folks haven't actually gone ahead, even though you have you found out quite late that you actually had a problem with this issue, because the attorney didn't bother to tell you that he was conflicted until, until the January budget meetings, even though he had asked you to change the firm he was working with that did not have a conflict in November. So I was concerned about that. Let me just say an additional thing about the budget, which you folks apparently are ignoring. You are very late. You were told on the thirtieth of January that you had to have a budget introduced by the fourteenth of March and passed, or approved after the state got through, that on the, on the twenty-fourth of April, or the meeting immediately thereafter. And you did nothing about it. You went right by that. Strangely, your attorney never said a word about it. For four previous years, he was all over you about what to do about it. Let me, one of the council people, I actually asked back in two thousand twelve, in an April meeting, "Do we have to actually do this? Can't we wait until at least June?" But it's now June, folks, you aren't doing it. And your attorney said, "This is a decision the council will have to make. Technically and under the law, you're required to pass a budget at this meeting, the twenty-fourth of April. Should you not pass this budget, the law provides that you have to explain to the Division of Local Services what's involved, and then it's their decision as to whether or not they will impose a budget, whether they will want to grant you time. In all likelihood, they won't come down, I agree. But legally, I have to say, you're supposed to pass the budget in April, folks. It's now June. You get passed July one, and who knows what the Division of Local Services, the Division of Local Services is gonna do to this town? You have no business ignoring that, as you have for the last five meetings. It's unexcusable. Secondly, I want to raise another issue with you. I have seventeen pages of material from the Department of Environmental Protection that deals with fourteen seventy-five Palisades. It tells you that since nineteen ninety-two, the Department of Environmental Protection has been trying to chase the actual responsible party for issues associated with the cleanup of that property. At one point in this entire process, they say public money is actually gonna be cleaned up, even though the development agreement you signed last week, you approved last week, talks as if, as a reason for big waivers that you gave them, that they have a big cost associated with it. But the people to whom you gave those waivers, so far as I can tell, are neither the owners, but possibly they are, because it's very difficult to tell who the owners are, but they're certainly not the responsible parties that the, that the state is chasing. I urge this council not to follow the advice of your attorney, which last week, in response to Councilman Pruitt's question about that remediation, the attorney said it is a private matter between, I assume the developer, given the construction of his sentence, between the developer and the Department of Environmental Protection. It's not a private matter for those parents whose kids are gonna be sitting cheek by jaw in the two Yeshiva high schools. It's not a private matter, and for all the kids who are gonna be walking by that in the, in the midst of any remediation that's taking place, or is there going to be any remediation, because you can't tell it from what's in here. I ask this council to take very seriously. I have talked to many experts, legal, environmental, health, health people, public health people. They say that a state, a township that decides to make a personal matter out of something like this is not taking its responsibility seriously. I ask your, this council, to take these matters extremely seriously.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Anyone else? Dr. Rashim?
Doctor Alex Rashim, Teaneck. I have, yeah. I'll try, not to swallow it. Okay, Doctor Alex Rashim, Teaneck. So I have a few points which are connected, disconnected. One of them comes to the last meeting, which was full of schoolchildren who make silly prank, okay? But the today's events in Oregon show that police had to come in, for sure. Whether they did everything right or not, this is under investigation, and I cannot comment on that. What bothers me is that parent of one of the children told that if you won't do what you need or something, okay, you'll see what happened during penalties, or worse. This is unacceptable, in my opinion, and I think the presiding officer, you or Mohammed, okay, should interrupt and say, "Okay, freedom of speech, you can say anything." But it's absolutely inappropriate and unadmissible to threaten with riot if something doesn't go your way. That's, that's my point. I really was a kind of, somebody here threatens the, the police and council with riot if the things won't be done this way. Shouldn't be tolerated, okay? Otherwise, I understand. See, I'm not for, for kids to suffer, but the thing I'm talking about, the hot heads coming here and basically threatening with riots. Okay, now, the second thing is the thing I already mentioned, and there is a possible violation of the law, namely Stimulus American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of two oh oh nine, which says any public project should use metal only made in USA. There are no specifications for the metal used on the rails at the, at the formal entrance to the municipal hall. No specifications. Actually, initial specification says no metal used. Okay? This metal is just pouring rust, okay? This metal is just pouring rust, okay? And known steel pouring rust is Chinese. So what is this? Is it Chinese in violation, or is it just extremely low-grade material? Because we'll have to change it. It's going to rust worse and worse, not, not better, okay? So, and the problem is that responsibility for quality of materials and workmanship was on architect, and it was continued to be on him. And now he is responsible for the 7 million of projects, the stadium in Bodie Park and police building. So I think we should invite two independent, absolutely independent experts to check what kind of specifications is used here, because the, in, in metal case, okay, the steel, because we cannot afford, like it's with, with the walkway and all stuff, in two years, everything to start fall apart on 7 million projects. That should be, should be just checked, and we should be sure that good quality materials are used here. Third thing is that everybody is talking here, for example, there's a high, high water level, and therefore we cannot build, down and all stuff. I don't know whether you know, and we, I think should build from best materials in TNEC, especially if they're not more expensive than usual ones, so-called HYcrete. It's a waterproof concrete, which was designed and developed by TNEC resident, head of the company, now sold for, for the, just sales of some, some other companies. It's on internet. It's waterproof concrete. Whatever goes low, below the surface, should be built of that. Because I asked a question about price, says, "No, it's not more expensive." And we should know that and check whether the contractors do that and do not put us some junk which starts to, to, well, just, just get water through, and then we have to do what we did with, with police building and so on and so forth. Okay, so that's, that's another thing about, also about the hotels. The problem is that if you follow, there is this huge project, American Dream, in Rosa Ford, and I'm sure they'll build all possible hotels and office buildings which, which are imaginable. So competition will be terrible, and therefore will be any profits from occupancy and all that is absolutely unclear. Okay, so therefore necessary to check whether really that's going to be to the benefit of the, thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Ma'am, I'm sorry, we're only allowed one, one bite at the ample of speaking. Anyone else to speak? Councilman-elect, Seun.
Alan Seun, TNEC resident. From the time that Jason Castle and I started gathering petitions to the time that we were elected and beyond, the number one issue that TNEC residents raised was high taxes. And they're right. As we pointed out, taxes over the past four years, the municipal tax rate has gone up by 15%. Last year was up almost 6%. And this year's budget, based on what we're looking at, based on the numbers that we're at right now, we'll be looking at a municipal tax increase of about 5.6%. The overall increase combined with the educational board of ed portion would be about 4.2% combined. On the average homeowner, that's an increase totaling nearly $500. That's a tremendous increase. We have an opportunity to make that change, and this council has had an opportunity to make that change with the budget that it started working on in January. It's June. There is no budget, and there will be no budget introduced tonight. I look forward to the opportunity on July 1 to work together with Jason Castle, to work with those continuing council members, to get ideas from the public, and to start making changes on those budgets. But that budget is already in progress. We're already halfway through the year as of July 1, and by the time we can pass a budget, we will be close to two-thirds of the way through the year. It's a remarkable challenge to make any of those cuts when so much of that money has already been spent. And I think it's really indicative, looking at so many of the decisions that were made or were not made this evening, as to the types of decisions that have already been made in past years and so far this year, that impacts that budget and budgets going forward, and will have continuing impact on those budgets. The Glen Point made a presentation this evening, and I sincerely hope that this one sticks, because we've heard $800,000 a few years ago, we heard 1.5, 1.7 million dollars earlier this year, this could be 1 million. I, I hope one of them sticks. But again, I, I do recognize, and to answer Ms. Kramer's question, there's about 180 million dollars in ratables that Glen Point Associates is challenging, a total of 28 million dollars in taxes that have been paid, covering about eight years, and that state tax court impact could well be $5 million or more. That has a tremendous impact, and there is virtually no money set aside for that. Chief Wilson could have been listed on the front page of the record among those retiring police chiefs who've cost money to municipalities for terminal pay. I had asked that question specifically as to what our terminal pay liabilities are to specific individuals as part of one of my open requests, and was told that until those individuals retire, that there is no calculation done. And that's a real cause of concern. The budget shows that there is a terminal pay liability of 5.5 million dollars. There is about $150,000 plus a couple thousand dollars left over, or barely 3% of that money in the budget to cover what could be 5.5 million dollars in liability. If there are changes to state law, that can only push some of our employees who are or near eligibility to retire before they would lose that money. There is a substantial liability there. There are so many other aspects, bond ordinances. Dr. Pruitt suggested that we hold off on some of those bond ordinances, and for various reasons, we're holding off this evening. But again, those bond ordinances may have no current year impact, but they impact future years. This year's budget shows an increase of $450,000 in debt service. That came about based on decisions made last year. Those decisions have an impact, and they have decisions going forward. Resolution 23 this evening covers the purchase of an air conditioner. And I'm sure it's a wonderful price for an air conditioner, but those air conditioners last for many, many years. Those air conditioners use tremendous amounts of electricity. And having the opportunity to see a number of possible air conditioner purchases, and to be able to see what the total cost of owning that air conditioner would be, and how we could minimize the impact to the township, could affect not only this budget, but budgets going forward. I look forward to the opportunity to work on the budget. I look forward to those challenges. But we have real challenges that are facing us, based on decisions that have been made in the past, and based on decisions that will impact taxpayers for years to come. I hope to have that opportunity to work with those council members going forward, and to hear, hopefully this evening, in those discussions, some changes that could be made, because we need to start making those changes now. Thank you very much.
Councilman-elect, Castle?
Good evening, Jason Castle. Before I begin, I want to, I want to congratulate young Mr. Rodriguez, the young Mrs. Wilkerson, and the late-to-arrive young Mr. Bivins, on being outstanding members of the Youth Advisory Board. Young people doing great things and setting examples for other young people to come, I think is something that we need to continue, and clearly, youth advisory boards is a shining light here in TNEC. Secondly, I'd like to, again, thank both Councilman Stern and Deputy Mayor Gussen for your years of service. You know, the train has left the station on elections, and we know that governing is different than campaigning. And I've never wanted to question the reasons for which individuals serve, but I do thank you for your years of service, and I look forward to sitting down with you during the transition to learn from your experience and hear the expertise that you have to offer. I will say that over the past four weeks, I've had an opportunity to tour the township, to have a number of discussions with department heads, township employees, members of the, of the township, whether residents or individuals who commute. And I will say that many of the concerns that, that I've heard here in council chambers, that I've heard on my couches, I've been watching proceedings, are steep in validity, and I think that all of you know that. What I've come to, to understand over the past four weeks, which I knew before, is that there are unlimited wants with limited resources. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to tour the township for a pretty extended day with Mr. Browton. We got through about three-quarters of the town, and there were a number of things that were concerning to me. We got to DPW, and I got a chance to see some of the vehicles that we've heard, we've heard concern about. You know, to quote Mr. Vatsky, or to loosely quote him, I would say to paraphrase, you know, his concern was that we were exposing some of these vehicles to the elements. And I got a chance to see firsthand the rusting vehicles, and vehicles that, you know, their, their deterioration was being compounded, not simply because of the elements, but also because of the hazardous materials that they were, or the corrosive materials that they're carrying, whether it's salts or otherwise. And I got to say that as an incoming councilperson, that will be front of mind for me when we are discussing this budget that has been provided to the incoming council. But one of the things that was most concerning to me, across the tour, across some of the conversations that we had, was our safety net here in town. Far too often, I think, the police and fire are looked at as line items on the budget, if not from the resident standpoint, sometimes from the council standpoint, because they are, they are pretty large elements of the budget. But I got a chance to sit at the firehouse during a five-minute increment when three emergency calls came in, and I was shocked to find out that our dispatching for fire services in this town is not done through a CAD system, which is computer-aided dispatch, but through a card catalog. And one of the questions I asked was, "Why don't we have computer-aided dispatch?" And it was, you know, there, there are a litany of reasons, but essentially because we are cutting on an annual basis, because we have to provide services to the town. But a card catalog for dispatch is, I, I think is one of those things that, if not the current council, but the new council definitely has to focus on. You know, to know that an emergency call comes in, and firefighters turn to a table behind them where there is literally a card catalog, almost like a, as if you're in a, in a library looking up a book to find the address, and that's adding to dispatch time, I think, I think can be improved upon. So it is my, I endeavor to work with outgoing council members, prevailing council members, and midterm council members to figure out ways that we can improve upon our response time for, for fire service. But I would also ask you to make a decision on what it is we, as a township, are going to do about dispatch services. And if dispatch is going to be combined, and we're going to do police and fire and emergency services, be it T-VAC or otherwise, that that decision be made with this council, so that the new council can make decisions from a fiscal standpoint on how we're going to fund a better dispatch than a card catalog. So with that, I close. Once again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carol Gottlieb, and I would like to make an announcement. There is a meeting tomorrow evening at the Rada Center about the bus service and port authority commuter issues for District 37. You can call Senator Loretta Weinberg's office for details.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further, hands, I'd like to close Good and Welfare, just to address a couple of the points that were, that were brought up. I'm not quite sure I understood specifically your question, Ms. Kramer, regarding the, the tax appeal, but yes, Glen Point's filing, or in the process of pursuing a multi-year, large-scale tax appeal. And so, you know, I think there's obviously limited things that we're allowed to discuss regarding that potential and ongoing litigation, but since they have things they want from the town right now, in terms of land use variances, gives us, I would imagine, some, some leverage in that process. And so fortunately for us, it's not just a tax appeal, but they're also requesting something from us at the same time. So I think ultimately that, that gives us a far better position than if they weren't looking to build this, this hotel. In terms of some of the comments Councilman-elect Seun mentioned, I, I can't, I can't help but, but bring it up. Throughout the campaign, both he and his running mate talked about 16% tax increase, 16% tax increase, 16% tax increase, and tonight he says that it's a 15% tax increase, and that throughout the campaign, both of them talked about an 8% tax increase this year, an 8% tax increase, 8% tax increase, and tonight he mentions that it's 5.6%. So I'm glad at least some reality comes into it. And he talked about how the budget's already half-spent, and, you know, sort of apologizing for, for failing before, when just 25 days ago, he knew that the budget would be half-spent before, before the election or before July 1. So just, just a little bit disingenuous. And Mr. Castle, regarding your comment just now that police is not just, or police and fire are not just a line item in the budget, no, police is a line item in the ELEC forums that you would report contributions from if you filed your ELEC report. PBA was a pretty significant contributor to your campaign, and so you toeing the line and supporting police department personnel issues is clearly not surprising. As far as the CAD dispatch system, we've gone through over the past, I want to say, six and a half years, from initially looking at combining, we had a presentation from the former fire chief and fire chief of Englewood, looking at combining fire dispatch amongst TNEC and Englewood. We've gone through combining our own police and fire dispatch, looking at Central County fire dispatch, police dispatch. Throughout all those conversations and the different opportunities to improve the service and, and reduce costs, I don't recall a single budget year or budget presentation from either our current or former fire chief where a request was made for CAD dispatch software or equipment. If this has never been a priority of the, the fire department before, this is, I think, the first time this council's hearing of it. So maybe your intimate relationship with our uniform services allowed you a different view than, than this council has over the last eight years. Anyone else have any comments? Dr. Pruitt?
A couple, a couple of things. I visited the gardens. In fact, one of the gardeners gave me a grand tour, which I found very enlightening. I want to commend the township, I guess, Mr. Browton and, and his helpers, for giving the people in the garden 16-by-16 plots that are laid out with railroad ties, and it's absolutely a beautiful thing. And also putting up a fence all the way around it, and for those people who don't spend much time in, in the rural areas of TNEC, the deer are a major problem in, in that particular area. So we have, we have beat the deer. However, in the tour, you know, when you have somebody take you on a tour, they, they point out things they're worried about, we have not beat the rabbits. And the reason for not beating the rabbits, Mr. Browton?
Not enough foxes.
Is, is because the perimeter fences, in some areas, don't go down to the ground all the way. So the rabbits can get up underneath that, and I think if we can find a way to correct that, there'll be a lot more happy people. The other part is, the gardeners have agreed to a set of rules, and the rules in that particular section are no fences. So I don't know what you do when somebody insists on breaking the rules on a free piece of property. I think you may ask them to go across the, the road to the other side, where you can put up a fence and, and move on. So I don't know how that's handled, but that, that's something that, if you accept the free piece of property, you have to follow the rules that are set up. Second thing, there's a redundant bus stop on TNEC Road. There's a bus stop at Tryon Avenue and TNEC Road in front of the pizza shop. And then within about 300 yards, there's another bus stop. And you don't need both of them. But the problem is that those businesses, those four or five businesses on Amsterdam Avenue and TNEC Road have no parking. So it would make some awfully happy business people if we took away the bus stop and let those five or three parking spots be used as parking. took away the bus stop and let those five or three parking spots be used as parking spots. I don't know, William, whether that's our problem or the bus company. What is, what is that?
The bus stop, the township designates the bus stops, but, if I remember correctly about that intersection, that those stores may be within the intersection, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna be able to have parking within 25 feet of the intersection. So you can't have, if those, if the front of those stores falls within 25 feet of that tee, where Shepherd Avenue comes up, you can't have parking in that area. So I don't, I don't remember exactly how it's situated, but that could be the problem. And that could be why there's no parking there.
Could we move the bus stop and then see whether or not-
While the police department's trying to evaluate it.
We need to take out a tape measure. Bus stop's a certain length, and parking prohibition from an intersection is a certain distance, and see how much of that no parking zone is due to the intersection, and how much is due to the bus stop. And we may only save maybe one parking space.
So what you have is, from the T-intersection at Shepherd, you need 25 feet from there. Then you have Amsterdam, you need a certain distance from Amsterdam.
Could we look at it?
So, yeah, we'll, we'll look at it.
Let's look at it.
We'll look at it.
Third thing, Mrs. Frey asked for us to enforce our ordinances about noise and that kind of a thing. And she also mentioned the idea that there are a lot of abandoned houses, and I'm not sure how we handle that. But in her particular section, it's a big problem. So if we could look after that particular problem, it would be helpful to, um-
Yes, we, we do have a, a process in, in the Health Department and the DPW for handling these abandoned properties. Unfortunately, the property owners have to be properly noticed and, and given time to correct the problem themselves. So the Health Department does go out, conduct an inspection, send a notice, give them 10 days, issue a violation notice, then the DPW has to get it scheduled. So it, it does take some time to, to actually get it done.
The hurdles to going through that process of notifying and allowing for, for mitigation before we go and, you know, maintain the property and put means in place, are those our rules that create those hurdles? Are those state rules?
Well, let me just say one thing before you sue. We're not, we've already discussed that there would be certain legal requirements if we want to recover that, that money. But the, the amount that we are expending to, to clean up these properties, we're foregoing that and, and that process, and, and just cutting it, these lawns in a reasonable amount of time. I mean, some of the properties that we go to, the people live there. So there's people actually living there. We just can't go up there and cut their lawn, you know? So they, they have to have a reasonable amount of time in getting that done.
And to answer your question-
All right, last, last comment.
I'm sorry, Dr. Pruitt. Question, Mr. Stewart.
The enabling statute controls what kind of notice you have to give, et cetera. It's not just our rules. We have to-
That's state statute.
Correct. We have to comply with the enabling-
Okay, last comment. Budget. Okay?
I'm very unhappy about the fact that we didn't move to pass the budget before July 1st, but we didn't. And I encourage our two new council-elect members to, when they come up here, the view is different from it is down there. And I hope that the things they see can be implemented once they get on the other side of the table. So I look forward to July 1st, and we'll see what happens.
Excellent.
Actually, I just wanted to comment on something that Council, that Castle said that, and actually agree with him, and that he said that it's a lot different running, and it's a lot different governing. So I'm sure that both of you will make a concerted effort to govern the way you need to. Like Dr. Pruitt just said, the view from this side of the table is, is, is different. But you'll, you'll come up here and see things a little differently. You'll still be residents, of course. You'll see things one way. You'll be elected officials who see things another way. And it's, you know, it's a learning experience. I'm sure you'll, you'll, you'll do fine. But just learn. That's the key. Just learn.
Just, just one, just one, a quick item. I've been working with Teaneck Road Business Community Alliance issues on Teaneck Road, and we're also working on Streetscape project on Teaneck Road. So we're gonna have the bid opening on June 17th in the council chambers here. I think, I think it's 1 o'clock. And that's for a consulting engineer to, to work with the committee on developing a modular streetscape for, for Teaneck Road from Selvage Ave. North to Tryon Avenue.
And then, just one note of, I think, very good news for, for, for the township of Teaneck today. There was a decision from the Third Circuit Court of Appeals regarding the Fair Labor Standards Act lawsuit, originally brought by Teaneck PBA and 88 individual current and former police officers in 2011. That suit was decided in favor of the township of Teaneck in District Court in January of 2013. The 88 individual police officers appealed, and today, decision from Third Circuit of Appeals found, or affirmed, the District Court's granting of our motion for summary judgment and disposing of the lawsuit. To give a little bit of background, this is a, an editorial from the Star Ledger dated January 30, 2013. "If it were a Saturday Night Live skit, we would roll our eyes and say, 'Come on, be fair.' Police officers would never ask for overtime pay simply for attending roll call 10 minutes before and after duty, and no way would they demand overtime for the minutes they spend getting in and out of their uniform, putting on their hats and buckling their belts. Any police force that makes these demands would be considered as ridiculous as Monty Python's Ministry of Silly Walks. Yet certainly, you could not take them seriously, no matter how seriously they took themselves. Unfortunately, the Teaneck police are not laughing, and neither should taxpayers. The Record of North Jersey reported that an attorney for 88 Teaneck police officers, active and retired, filed a complaint on their behalf in court three years ago seeking overtime compensation for 10-minute roll calls and getting dressed and undressed for duty. Quote, 'I would like to assume it would be a nightmare to calculate,' said Senator Loretta Weinberg, D. from Bergen County. Its entitlement mentality run amok. Perhaps they can also seek compensation for the breakfast they eat that fuels their body for their tours of duty in town. After all, Teaneck police were limited to a 1% raise as per Governor Christie's arbitration reform that capped salaries. The same contract also ensures officers get $101,081 after five years, according to the record. But who's counting? Everyone scrambling in the sofa cushions for an extra dime. So what if the sofa, sofa happens to be the one you are sitting on? Unhappily for the Teaneck Police Department, U.S. District Judge Catherine S. Hayden found there was no violation of fair labor practices. Police failed to prove their claim for overtime under federal rules, and muster time is part of their contract. Oh, and by the way, Teaneck never paid officers for getting dressed, but the intrepid officers, with the blessings of their union, plan to appeal. Police union officials refuse to return calls or emails or comment, but who can blame them? Living in a bubble of 'I got mine' is a lot easier than explaining greed in a time of shared sacrifice." Now, to give a little more background about the magnitude of this lawsuit, initially, the 88 officers and Teaneck PBA 215 had demanded more than $8 million in back owed overtime, in addition to ongoing overtime obligation for putting on hats and buckling their belts. Now, since this lawsuit was decided, and then appealed, and decided again, it's great news for Teaneck, but the really bad news is what it cost us to go through the process of deposing 88 officers, hiring expert account, forensic accounting witnesses, and the legal fees, in addition to those expenses, totaled over three budget years, $535,670.51 for Teaneck to defend this baseless request from our own police officers and the PBA. Now, that very same PBA is the one that funded Councilman Sown and Councilman Castle's election campaign. So I have great trepidation about handing over the reins to the people who were bought and paid for by the same union that wanted to get paid overtime for putting on their hats and buckling their belts. Overall, it's good news for Teaneck that we're finally done with that chapter of litigation, but it was at no small expense, again, more than a, more than a half million dollars spent to defend a lawsuit demanding overtime for people getting dressed to go to work in the morning. It's beyond silly, as the Star Ledger writes. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have raffles, RA 1389, minutes that will be scheduled for approval on June 24th. Why is this in the schedule here if there's no minutes to approve tonight?
Just a report for council.
I'm sorry?
Just a report for council, update for council.
Okay. It's generally not in our consent agenda. Resolutions 1 through 27, with the exception of Resolution 18, which was previously tabled. And the bill list in the amount of?
$4,664,516.46, and I have to also to talk in. Resolution 28, whereas on May 20th, 2014, the Township Council adopted Resolution Number 87-2014, which authorized a person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption liquor license number 026033027003 from ETT Inc., DBA Vinnie O's, to Teaneck Doghouse LLC for the premises situated at 1413-1415 Palisades Avenue. And whereas the Township must receive an alcoholic beverage retail licensee clearance certificate for transfer from the New Jersey Division of Taxation Licensing Unit prior to the authorization of such transfer, now therefore be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Teaneck, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that Resolution Number 87-2014 is hereby rescinded. Resolution Number 29, authorize municipal consent to Amusements of America, June 2014 carnival at Teaneck Armory. Whereas the Township of Teaneck has received a request from Dominic Vavona, Amusements of America, 24 Federal Road, Monroe Township, New Jersey, to hold a carnival at the Teaneck Armory from Thursday, June 12th through Sunday, June 15th. On Thursday, June 12th, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday, June 13th, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. On Saturday, June 14th, from 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and on Sunday, June 15th, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And whereas Dominic Vavona, Amusements of America, has advised he will obtain all the necessary permits to use this facility by the State of New Jersey Department of Military and Veteran Affairs, and will provide the township with the copies of said approvals. And whereas the various township departments reviewed the requests and recommended approvals subject to the filing, to which Dominic Vavona, Amusements of America, shall agree in for said permit to be issued by the Township of Teaneck. Number one, Fire Department. The Teaneck Fire Department requests that the carnival operator be required to give the fire department an opportunity to perform a familiarization walkthrough of the site prior to the start of the event. Number two, Police Department. The Teaneck Police Department advised that to ensure proper traffic control and internal security, a six-foot fence be installed around the area of the carnival, and 10 off-duty police officers be required on each day from the opening to closing with payment for such extra-duty work to be paid by the operator in advance, as required by the Township's extra-duty program. No reimburse, no reimbursements for reins. Three, T-VAC. T-VAC requests that during all hours of operation of the carnival, a guide be assigned to meet the ambulance at Teaneck Road in Ward Plaza to guide the T-VAC crew to the exact location of any injured or ill person. Should the situation arise, T-VAC requests a similar familiarization walkthrough of the site prior to the start of the event. In addition, T-VAC has several suggestions regarding emergency communication for a designed person from the lodge who will be on-site during the operational hours to ensure fast communication with the emergency services if needed. Building Department. The type of event is permitted under the current zoning ordinance and will not require permits beyond the Township's special events permit. Any permits, approvals, or inspections required under the New Jersey Uniform Construction Code must be obtained by the operator from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Health Department. While food vendors must have a current retail food establishment license in New Jersey, food service providers or food-related vendors must obtain a special events permit. From the Teaneck Health Department, party applying for permit is responsible for all cleanup of debris related to the events. Sufficient trash receptacles must be provided for trash and debris. Whereas the carnival operators shall be required to provide written notice of the carnival to all properties which face Ward Plaza, all properties located on all intersecting streets with Ward Plaza for one block south, and Teaneck Road between Ward Plaza and Armory Place, including the corner properties, with a copy of said notice provided to the township. Conform with the requirements of the township that no posters, et cetera, are permitted in the township right of way, on poles, signs, et cetera, in conformance with the Township Code. Whereas the municipal manager recommends that the license be issued, provided the carnival operator meets all of the Township's requirements and all fees are paid. Now therefore be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Teaneck that it grants said approval subject to the conditions herein before outlined.
Okay. So moved. Second?
I'll, I'll circle.
Roca?
Councilmember Stern?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schwartz?
This is, um-
On the entire consent agenda and the two walked-in resolutions.
So I am, yes, involved, but I'm recusing on 24 and 28. That's it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Gossen?
Yes, with an abstention on bill list item 14-02616 and 14-02617. If you're refusing yourself, we no longer have a quorum. You're abstaining. Okay. Introduction of ordinances is the next item on our agenda. We're gonna be introducing ordinances.
19-2014, ordinance relating handicapped parking from a portion of Winthrop Road. Ordinance Number 20-2014, ordinance amending rules, regulations, and fees for the Votey Park sports, sports blocks. Ordinance Number 21-2014, ordinance to approve a financial agreement with Teaneck Senior Housing Urban Renewal. Ordinance Number 22-2014, and ordinance amending Section 36-11.6 to Article 2 Parking Division 1 Generally, and Chapter 36 of the Township Code entitled Traffic, relating to the establishment of restricted resident commuter permit decal parking along a portion of East Oakine Avenue, also known as Puffin Way, to provide an exception for resident parking permits. Ordinance Number 23-2014, an ordinance adding Section 36-11.5 to Article 2 Parking and Division 1 Generally, and Chapter 36 of the Township Code entitled Traffic, related to the establishment of restricted resident commuter parking, decal parking along portions of Elizabeth Avenue, including students, employees, and contracted staff of the Township Board of Education.
I have a question. Any ordinance?
Yeah, I'm a little bit nervous about the ordinance on Elizabeth Avenue. I'm not sure that we're gonna not create more problems for people who have to park there for the school than we are for the people who are commuting. And I want to make sure that that's been appropriately examined before we pass it.
Well, we're, right now, we're just introducing an ordinance. We're not passing it?
Well, I'm trying to get it before it gets to a point where we have more trouble than we do now. So I'm introducing it. I want to look at-
Yeah, I've also, I've, I've been in contact with, with school officials on this issue, and, and we're definitely being cautious about that. Our plan is to give free passes to faculty to park there, free passes to students to park there. And there's a two-hour time limit for parking there. So if a parent had to come up to the school for some reason, they would still be able to park even if they didn't have a pass.
I, I just think-
But before we actually implement and put signs up and everything, we'll make sure we address your concerns and have a meeting with them and-
Because we may upset two commuters and upset a whole lot of other people who have to work, but we'll, we'll work on that.
Okay. Any other questions? Roca?
I need a motion to-
So moved. Second?
Councilmember Stern?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Gossen?
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Schwartz, are you abstaining on ordinance 21, 2014?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Gossen?
Yes. Okay. Old Business, 2014 Municipal Budget. I think, I think it's clear that the budget woes, as the process of introduction and adoption, are not going to be solved tonight by a bare quorum. I'm disappointed that many of the suggestions I had made along the lines since January for reductions in spending and changing the, the shape and way in which we perform municipal services did not garner a majority of my council colleagues' support. It's with, with great concern that this budget is gonna be handed off to the, to the next- the next council and not handled by this council. But the reality is, is that that's going to be the case. And so, I think at this point, further discussion on the, on the budget tonight, or even on the, on the 2014 capital budget, just are gonna be words in the wind. It's not gonna be passed tonight, it's not gonna be introduced, certainly not gonna be introduced or adopted by the 24th. And ultimately, the inability of, of this council to operate as a whole and come up with a responsible budget that protects the taxpayers and maintains township services is now the, is now, you know, now has a proud new owner. And I certainly hope that election rhetoric comes to reality and that there is a way to do more with less. Unfortunately, as Dr. Pruitt mentioned earlier, the view is a little bit different from up here than, than from, from, from the seats, and I have, I have great concern that this budget is going to be costly and expensive and less than as thorough as it, as it should be, the process and the, and the investigation of our spending is gonna be just lacking in, in, in that process by the, by the new council. That's gonna be even greater under the time gun than this council was. These are all things that the candidates who were successful in the election knew, but decided not to talk about, but ultimately, that's what we as Teaneck residents have to deal with, and I'm disappointed in, in myself and my, and my colleagues for, for not being able to, to do this sooner. That being said, if we can move to item three, shared services, do we have, Mr. Manager, do we have anything specific on shared services?
Nothing specific.
Okay, anyone? Yeah. Dr. Pruitt?
I, I think we ought to follow through on this offer to let us view the dispatch up in the county. Old council, new council, some kind of council.
Were we ever able to schedule any prospective dates?
I left a message the other day, again, for the individual who's, actually, the individual's secretary who's responsible for the facility. I've not heard from her out call again tomorrow. The question is, again, I don't know if we'll do it in June, or, you know, or post, pre-July 1 or post-July 1.
If it, if it happens before July 1, if we can also invite the council elect to join us in those two separate missions?
Absolutely. The question, the question again I have is, and we discussed this, is how are we gonna, how are we gonna, how is the group gonna come up there, with more than a quorum or less than a quorum?
I, I think ideally, it would be in, in two separate shifts, you know, three and four, or certainly not, not, not four. So, three and three, or, you know, at this point, I don't think it's essential that, that I be there, and they're not gonna be able to be a part of the decision-making process. So, taking me out of the picture, you can go in groups of three and three with two council members-elect in either or both groups, and certainly avoid any, any issues of quorum or requirements for public notice, and it can be as two separate subcommittees of the whole. Does that make sense, Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I will continue to work on that. Mr. Brown, would you prefer that I get dates that the facility's available for inspection, or would you prefer to, I think that's what we said we were gonna do, that get dates for the facilities available for inspection, a couple of dates, and see if we can get Council up for those dates? It's gonna be during the day. It doesn't make, I mean-
Isn't the dispatch a 24/7 operation?
24/7, yeah, but I think you wanna see it in operation when it's more busy.
Well, I think it's more important to see it, you know, than, than to continually delay. So, if it meets council member schedules to go in the evening, I mean, it's a 24/7 operation-
It is.
-to look at.
It is.
Anytime you got.
It is. Not staffed as much in the evening and over the weekend, but it is a 24-hour operation, correct. And obviously, I'm assuming, Mr. Brown, that when we go up there, well, I shouldn't assume that the police chief and the fire chief may come along as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Municipal court security, instances we were discussing within the context of the special law enforcement officer. I think we, in closed session tonight, in one of our, our discussions on labor issues, got some, some feedback as far as using special law enforcement officers or the SLEO classification for court security may represent some, some labor issues, and I think, looking at the next item, police and fire dispatch, I think we've, we've kind of addressed that. So, if we can move on to communications, we've received a petition from the folks on Vandalinda for a parking restriction, again, I think-
I'll, I'll go through my, my normal process where I do an official survey.
Excellent. Any committee reports?
There's another, there's another communication from 19 Voorhees Street?
There's only one listed on our agenda.
I know, but we got the letter asking about a tree. Can you talk about that, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, there's a, a tree at 19 Voorhees. DPW's going out to, to inspect that location. There's a possibility that it is not a township tree, that they're gonna measure and determine whose tree it is. If it's a township tree, then we'll take responsibility and take appropriate action.
What, what's the issue with the tree? Regardless of who owns it, what needs to be done with it?
Height of it, branches possibly falling or going over the street. The residents concerned about the tree.
Okay, very good. Committee reports, anyone? Committee reports? Last night, at Parks, Planets, and Recreation Advisory Board, we covered a couple items. First, as, as we did with our resolutions tonight, our introduction of ordinance as far as amending regulations and fees for the Vote Sea Park Sportsplex. Because there's green acre funding involved in the project, the fee schedule that our recreation department charges normally for our, our normal field permitting process needs approval by green acres, so while this is introduced tonight, it's very important that we look to be able to adopt this on the 24th, so that this can, new fee schedule can go into place as soon as possible, so that there's no issue as to how we're going about issuing permits for, especially for the, for the fall leagues coming up, as they look to, to seek and secure their, their permits for the whole season. So, that's just important that we get that squared away. And then, also, there was discussion amongst the, the board as to unofficially making a request for a council liaison to replace me moving forward from July 1, and the request was for Councilman Schwartz as a multi-sport coach and parent volunteer. In the past, the recreation focus of this, of this board sought to request that, if you can fit it into your schedule, that you join the, the board as the council liaison, and that was about it. No other committee reports, we're about council-listed items. Eminent Domain, American Legion Drive, Councilman Schwartz.
Yes, just a quick question, when does Parks meet, by the way?
Monday nights at 7:30. It's usually the, I don't know, what's today's date? 10th and 2nd Monday of the month.
Okay. Eminent Domain, two big bad words, but here's the problem. American Legion Drive, disgusting. It's, we've got a sear lane which we've really given all developers the tools that they need to build, and nothing's gotten done. American Legion Drive, when I was on the planning board, had some great presentations made, presentations that included a mix of housing, shopping, and retail, and especially millions of, millions of dollars in improvements to the general areas' infrastructure. And it started and it died, and now it's sat there, and, and the markets recovered, and nothing's getting done. So, what I wanna do is, if nothing's gonna continue to get done, then we need to do something about that. And I know many people object, object to Eminent Domain, and I'm not saying that's the way to go, but I think that is the way to start talking about that. And I'd like to, if, if my council members agree, is first get an opinion or get a two-minute presentation, and at a later meeting from our attorneys on what, what's involved in that. I hope the message gets through to the developers or to someone so that lane doesn't sit fallow. I'll also be discussing in the future, Eminent Domain about Alfred Avenue, another property that just has gone absolutely nowhere really quickly. And I have that listed on the council, I missed it for this agenda, but I'll discuss it the next meeting as well. So, if that's the case, I'd like to instruct our attorney or, or leader or planner to discuss what we need to do to get American Legion Drive moving in the right direction.
Okay.
Yeah, let me talk about that. Let me, let me endorse the idea of Councilman Schwartz. We, we want all these services, and we don't wanna continue to raise taxes for the homeowners, so we're really gonna have to look at as smart development where we can. And we know that there will be people who won't like that, but we have to figure out what is in the best interest of the township, and I think those two properties should definitely be looked at.
Excellent. The remaining council-listed items are from Councilmember Katz, so we can carry them to the next meeting, when he will be there to discuss them. Township managers' report.
Okay, couple items. Shared services agreements, we're gathering them to be posted on the website, we're contacting Hackensack, the clerk is gonna be contacting Hackensack for their abandoned property ordinance. The dates for dedication of the sportsplex, I have a few dates. We've already started to use the sportsplex, we've allowed some play on it. I was looking at, in order to get it going, Wednesday, June 25th, or Thursday, the 26th in the evening at 7:00 p.m. If those days work-
Sunday, June 29th, my birthday would work as well.
26 would be a little bit better. 26 would be a little better.
I, I was thinking of evening, lights on.
At what time?
7:00 p.m. You know, we-
So, 7:00 p.m., 7:00 p.m., it's still quite daylight out?
Yeah, but by the time we-
If we wanna get, if we wanna get like the, you know, the, the lighted field effect, we have to, you know, wait a little closer to 9:00 o'clock now?
But we can start at, we can start at 8:00, you know, by the time everybody gets gathered-
8:00 o'clock, you, you know, as it starts to, to, as the sun sets, there's still quite a bit of light, but you'll see the impact of, of the lights and have a better feel. I think if you wanna like, you know, have the feel of the lights, feel the night, 8:00 o'clock would be a lot better. 7:00 o'clock's still gonna be broad daylight.
Okay, so we're talking, Thursday, June 26th at 7:00 p.m.
8:00 p.m.
8:00 p.m., I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. And is the, the signage ready to go?
The signage, signage is not ready to go.
Okay.
But we, you know, we're having so many requests for the field that we gotta-
Yeah.
-we gotta do it. There was a, a request for a certain signage from the mosque, and, and we're working with them, we've contacted them to assist with that. Revaluation meeting, you mentioned that earlier, June 30th, 7:00 p.m., Rhoda Center, we'll have an information session then. I just wanna update you that they've, they're moving pretty well on the revale, they've probably been in about 80% of the homes already, so they're, they're moving pretty quickly on, on getting that done. And that's it.
All right. Attorney's report? Okay, motion to adjourn? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any close?
Oh, man. Glad that you know we're home and reasonable.
Okay, I just have five before I even, I'm, I'm going to go. Um, it was, yeah, seven. And, um-